Looks like I'm muted. I'd like to call this meeting to order at 7:01. This is a Kent Park and Rec regular. Is this a regular meeting? Or is this a special meeting?
A regular.
That are regular. It is a regular meeting? All right, great. Monday, May 2nd. Park and Rec regular meeting, starting at 7:02. I think we have a quorum, so we do not have a need to elevate alternates. I'm just not 100% sure if the Zoom user is a member of the commission. Do you mind letting us know who Zoom user is? Oh, hi. Hi, Lynn. Nice to see you.
Glenn.
So we've got Lynn here. So motion to approve the agenda.
So moved. Second.
So that was moved by Michael, seconded by Rufus. All in favor?
Bye.
Bye.
Wonderful. So the next agenda item is to appoint commissioner to fill the vacancy left by Lynn Harrington. We had discussed when we received Lynn's resignation of perhaps elevating Julia. But I think we should have further discussion. If there's further discussion to be had.
They all, well, it's not about who we might. I just didn't know whether we can appoint somebody or do we have to recommend and that goes to the Board of Selectmen?
I believe from previous.
I'm not sure. I didn't do my due diligence at our bylaws.
I think we can appoint somebody and then at the annual meeting, which happens in January. You know, it becomes official in some capacity in that meeting, but we can appoint somebody to fill the position until that meeting.
Having spoken to Darlene, that sounds accurate, Abigail.
What we are doing is appointing somebody to fill the position and then we would do something in a more, a different capacity or then then provide a recommendation to BOS for their January, their annual January meeting.
Okay. Who are the alternates?
So currently, the alternates are Julia Neff and Diane Impasto. I'm not sure. I might not say her name correctly. Impasto?
Okay.
Excuse me, Diane, if I didn't say your name correctly. So two.
Well, it seemed to me that it would make the most sense to elevate one of the, or not elevate, but to add to the commission, one of the alternates because they've been part of what's been going on and and so I wouldn't go outside of either one. That's my part of the discussion. Anybody else?
I agree with that sentiment. And if we did that, then we would be filling a vacancy for an alternate. And perhaps that we draw from the community for that. Okay, so without, then if there's no further discussion, a motion to appoint an alternate? And how how would we like to decide which alternate to appoint?
Julia is here. Julia, are you interested in being elevated to the role of a commissioner?
Yes, I am.
It makes sense to me to have Julia step onto the commission, particularly since she was very involved in the hiring of Jared and that would just that relationship is already, you know, pretty strong. So with that, I would make a motion to appoint Julia Neff to fill the vacancy on the commission.
I second that.
All in favor? Hi.
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 So the motion was presented by Rufus, seconded by Michael, and it was it's like it was unanimous vote. Wonderful.
Thank you.
Wonderful to have you as a commission chair. I'm sorry. As a commissioner. The next part is the election of a commission chairman. So discussion nominations. History here. When the chairman was up in January, we had a discussion of, I nominated at that time, Julia. She was not available to be because she was an alternate. Since then, there's also been discussion about having co-chairs or a chair and a deputy. And I think I would like to explore that as an idea, particularly for Jared, for Jared's case. And I think it also helped alleviate the pressure of one person as the chair. Just because there's a lot of responsibilities and tasks for the chair.
I would actually advocate that we not do that at this meeting because we have not accordingly changed or had the bylaws approved to make that happen. And we probably could do it down the line, but I'm not sure that we should step outside of the bylaws at this point, since they say a single chairman.
I tend to agree with Blythe that we have to follow the existing bylaws.
What is there any, would it be helpful for us to to say express whether or not we're interested in being the chairman and that way would sort of I mean, I for one am, no, no one's nominating me, but I'm not interested in being the chairman anticipating a fair amount of travel this summer. But if that's helpful at all, how we could sort of move this ahead.
I am not interested in being the chair. I am 100% here to support the running of meetings and would be happy to lead any meeting that it is where it's helpful for me to. But I just have a really full plate with a lot of other things and I would hate to not be able to show up in an awesome fashion for every meeting that I have to lead. I meet a lot of, I lead a lot of meetings otherwise.
I also am not interested in being chair.
I'd like to nominate Julia Neff to be the Chair of Parks and Rec Commission.
Thank you. I I guess, as I said in the last meeting, and Rufus mentioned it today, having played such a large role in the search for the director and the hiring of Jared, I am happy to be the chairperson and work closely with Jared and support his role as director.
Michael, we haven't heard, how are you feeling about that?
Unless Michael wants to be chairperson.
I I definitely support Julia 100%. I know that as someone without kids, I probably have a little more free time than a lot of people in the commission, so I didn't want to jump and say no to it, but I am, I'm not, I'm not exactly interested in it, but I didn't want to just put a negative out there, but I do definitely support Julia.
So I think we need a second
A second.
For further discussion. So I would second motion. And now we can. So who else is on the commission? John and Diane Seal alternate?
He's an alternate. So John, John Grant.
I think we have a quorum and we can vote.
Yes. So shall we make a vote for Julia Neff as the condition chairman? All in favor?
Hi.
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 So the motion was made by Kate, seconded by Rufus. All in favor. Julia, would you like to take over the running of this meeting?
So Abigail, thank you for running the last meeting in the, in a third, maybe, whatever tonight is. Just by your, your COVID or whatever you were suffering from.
No problem. I'm here for the commission.
You're a wonderful interim, interim leader, Abigail.
Yeah, thank you. All right, let's keep moving then, I guess. Jared, do we have any correspondence?
Yes, we have one letter from William Baccarat. This, his letter was also sent to the Board of Selectmen, and it was previously on one of their meeting's agendas. But I will read it. It's a brief letter here. And just so you guys know, I subsequently spoke to Bill. We had a very long, like hour-long conversation in the office and it's very productive and it was good conversation, but I will read his letter first and then answer any questions. A letter was dated April 11th, 2022, to the Kent Park and Recreation Commission. For Emory Park in summer of 2022, it looks like it will take all hands on deck. Many summers about 4:00 PM, I have walked down from the parking area to Camp Kent to witness campers, parents and camp staff, all pleased from the successful completion of another day, another camp day. Our granddaughter was enrolled two summers and lived with us those happy weeks. Working parents in Kent could count on Camp Kent for safe, engaging childcare. Scholarship help was provided, families that needed it from the Kent Community Fund. My walk down the hill was mainly to swim after the campus had left, and all lifeguards since 1993 have come to know me well. We kept a close eye on thunderstorms. Emory Park water is the cleanest and best for swimming in the area. Let's get the park and the pool up and running in the next few months. It deserves the commissions and the selectmen's full attention and support. If funds and repairs are short, you may need a commitment of a little ARPA funding. Schedule a volunteer workday. I will be there. I ask for this letter to be read aloud at your April 18th meeting. Obviously, a lot of stuff happened with meetings and not getting things done accurately accordingly, but we're getting to it now, but April 18th meeting, and thank you for your support for the children, families and seniors, my peer group in Kent. Sincerely yours, William B. Baccarat. Copied Gene Speck for Selectmen. As I noted, Bill and I subsequently, I set up a meeting with him and he came in and we talked, we talked for a long time and I explained to him the challenges of the Emory Park Pool and where we currently were and he was understanding. And I also explained to him that we were still very much committed to getting the camp off the ground, just in an alternate fashion, which certainly pleased him to know that we hadn't just thrown in the towel. So it was, it was a very productive meeting and you know, I'm pleased to say that obviously I didn't have the news for him he would have liked, but he left feeling like we were responsive to his concerns and that he understood that we were doing what needed to be done in the best interest of our residents.
That sounds great. And I know that we, some of us were on the call the other night in the special meeting with, and we discussed Emory Park. And we certainly know that that's something that we need to figure out and we can discuss that further when we get down to Parks and Fields. Do you have a director's report?
Yeah, just very briefly, just wanted to let everyone know a couple of things. One, we've had volunteers coming over from the Kent Center School to assist with the after-school program, and that's been a big help, you know, keeping the kids engaged and it allows us to do multiple different activities at once. So one group of kids can do one thing. One group of kids can do another thing and that has been, that's been really cool and the kids love it. You know, they, they love getting interact with, you know, high schoolers. It's, I'm older, so it's not as fun, but they like the young kids. So that's been going really well. I've been coordinating with Megan Sokol and Nikki or something like that. Sorry if I butchered your name, Megan. And that's been going really well. Secondly, I want to let you know, we've been putting a lot of work into the fields at Kent Commons. Not sorry, Kent Commons, at the Kent Center School and it, it's going to be slow, slow-going for sure, but Rick from Highway was really nice enough to bring a tractor out there and I've been, you know, kind of tearing up the infield, not tearing them up, but I don't find the appropriate term, but basically dragging the infield so that we could turn the clay over and, you know, change it from being rock solid to be much more appropriate playing field surface. So that's going to take a lot of work, but we're getting there. And, you know, like I said, Rick has been a super help and I even had Ed Mattson come down for a few hours to help me out because there was just so much work that needed to be done. So those are the two things that we're not really going to talk about as much today that I wanted to just make sure you guys were aware of. Otherwise, everything else we're going to kind of talk about.
Okay, great. Lynn, I see you have your hand raised. Did you want to say something?
Yes, since there's no public comment on the agenda, can I speak under correspondence?
Sure.
Thank you. All right, so I have a letter to read. Bear with me, please. It's quite long. To the Kent Park and Rec Commissioners, I was disappointed to hear your discussion on April 19th, 2022 meeting, and I'm here tonight to clear up some inaccurate statements that were made on the record. First, the director stated that he was very unhappy, learning that the commission would have, will have more involvement in breaking down the budget and that then I would be giving the director spending limits. That is not what I said. What I said was that maybe we, as in the commission, should make a list of the programs that we spend money on. Look at previous budgets and how much we have regularly spent on each program in the past, so we had a good idea of how the budget, budget numbers were originally derived. The idea was to give a new employee an idea of how we regularly spend taxpayer funds and how much is left so we can figure out where we can splurge, what new programs we can introduce and how we can find extra funds to make all of Jared's exciting ideas come to fruition. I never said the commission would impose spending limits. There was no directives given by the chairman. I was the first member to remind you all that the chairman has no stronger authority than than the other commissioners. Ideas I had between meetings were brought up as a suggestion at the next meeting. And it was suggested that budget and financial reports only be looked at every six months. While this idea in theory sounds like less work, if the budget is exceeded, it's not the director's responsibility to bring this to the attention of the treasurer and ultimately the taxpayers, but the commissioners for not keeping track of the budget. The job description and bylaws say that a financial report should be presented at every meeting. I understand that you are keen to change these documents, but each statement was written to be a fail-safe method or checks and balances to protect the taxpayers. These documents have far-reaching implications that you are not aware of. Our town receives an annual audit and wants to see that every department and commission have fail-safe methods in place to reduce the ability to free spend outside the budgeted means. Kay and Blythe, you're right about the bylaw that the director has the authority to purchase, purchase items needed for a program that has been approved by the commission. I even pointed that out to the director myself. I've been actively involved in the budget process from creation to implementation at the Park and Rec level and through attending Board of Finance meetings regularly. I'm used to working very frugally with the Park and Rec budget, Park and Rec budget, as I hear frequently how the Board of Selectmen and Board of Finance have made sharp cuts in other line items to make the budget balance. For example, the Kent Center School BOE was required to trim $80,000 off its budget this year. How can Park and Rec feel good about asking for increases in their budget when our town public school is being asked to cut so substantially? We are in a time of frugal, a time of being frugal at the town level and you need to be cognizant of this. How's it, how does a person who just started a job four months ago know the climate of our town's spending? How does he know how much we have spent previously or how much they can spend to make the fiscal year end totals work out within the parameters? Is it okay to buy 10 to 15 heavy-duty traffic cones and tables when the Department of Public Works has cones or sawhorses? And the town hall and community house have tables? The look I gave the director at the extravaganza was of surprise because even though the event was fantastic, and I expressed this to the director, it costs a lot more than Park and Rec usually spends on such events. And it was clear that non-residents were partaking in this free community program because the sign-up sheet did not differentiate between residents and non-residents. While I've been very supportive of the positive changes Jared has implemented to the Park and Rec image, decisions such as the logo should have been brought to the commission for discussion and approval. Purchasing t-shirts and sweatshirts with this logo on them for distribution to members of the public should have been a commission discussion. Yes, there's something to say about brand and name recognition, but when you are using taxpayer funds, you should all be mindful of the optics of spending. Does anyone know how much these cost? Does anyone know right now how much is left in the budget? Did the gravel for the walking path come out of the seasonal maintenance contractors' funds or the maintenance line? If you don't know the answer to these questions, then maybe you need to learn what a commissioner is supposed to do. I find it very disrespectful for the current director to put words in the mouth of the former director on record regarding not knowing what commission, what the commission does. Leslie was in her position for 23 years. She dealt with many different commissions. And she knew what she was allowed to do without the commission's approval and what items needed approval. Speaking ill of someone who had that much time with our town and this capacity is of bad judgment, and I would hope that never happens again. The interim Park and Rec Director Miranda was in that department for a very short period of time with much more limited hours. She did not have the capacity or knowledge that the new director has. The director stated on record, my own opinion from his point of view of the first selectman. Again, he was speaking out of line and in poor judgment. My own opinion of our elected official is not for discussion at the Park and Rec Commission meeting. I will say, however, that I suggest you watch town meetings to draw your own opinion of our elected Board of Selectmen. The meetings are all recorded and the knowledge you will gain from watching those meetings will impact your role as a Park and Rec Commissioner. You cannot act effectively as a commissioner without knowing the broader happenings of the town of Kent. We are not our own silo. We are an active cog in the municipal government and our spending has an impact on the entire town. When the interim director started, the town hall was still closed. No one was allowed in to train the new employee, so since the first selectman was in the building, she answered questions for the interim director. At that time, the first selectman had never held a public office, never sat on any town boards and had worked out of town for most of the 25 years that she's lived in town.
Hi, can I just pause for a second? Is there any way that we can have this letter submitted to us as correspondence, just because we have a lot on our schedule? And we're trying, we'd like to try to get this meeting done within a half an hour. So I just don't know how much more you have, Lynn, but it might be more productive for us to have this submitted as public comment so we could read it.
I will submit the full letter to you after I read it on record now. Four months into her.
Can you give us a sense of how much longer you have, please?
I don't know how much longer it'll take. I'm going to just finish the rest of the letter. Four months into her own new job, she was definitely not familiar with how Park and Rec operated or how any of the town departments were structured. Yet she felt she could give the interim director proper direction. This was not conducive to our commission running smoothly. The day the town hall opened and I was allowed in, I went into the Park and Rec office. The interim director looked up at me and said, what do you want? I was quite surprised and dismayed, but I let it go. When the commission was discussing Camp Kent, getting Camp Kent up and running, she blatantly refused to do it at all. On another occasion, the first, first selectman told the interim director she should participate in an eight-hour workshop in conjunction with the Kent Sustainability Program on Equity. Since the interim director was temporary, there was no reason for her to use eight hours of the limited 20 hours per week she had available in such a manner. And the first selectman should not be directing the interim director. Other long-term town hall employees were asked to participate and they refused because they knew they didn't have eight free hours in their work week to spend on this type of program that didn't impact their role in municipal government. If anyone wants to say micromanaging happened with the interim director, I would look back at the reality of where the direction at the time was coming from, as it wasn't from me. Abigail, would you like to explain it since you are the one that keeps accusing me of it? The director talked about our meeting last Friday. I had a Kent resident email me and asked me if the director had office hours. I told him I wasn't sure and I was, I would check. When the director, when I told the director, he looked at me, said, really, I doubt that happened. Would you like to see the email? I can forward that to you as well. The resident stated, the resident stated that he wanted to introduce himself and his wife to the new director and talk about Emory Park. Funny, when he went to the town hall numerous times, the director was never in his office. When I asked the director if he could commit to a couple of hours a week in the office so people could come in and talk to him, he did not like the idea, even though we discussed this in his interviews. At one of the interviews, the director asked what the job hours were. If he had to sit behind a desk from nine to four and then do his other work or what that meant. The hiring committee explained that we would like a couple of hours posted when he will be in the office. There is plenty of office work to do and no reason why two hours a week can't be dedicated in the office barring any emergencies. These hours would be posted so the public knows when he is physically there, just like the tax collector, land use officer, health department, et cetera. From the perspective of a resident of Kent, the optics of a newly hired Park and Rec director at an 11% higher salary than the previous director and the majority of the town hall staff, having a presence in the office is important. Fast forward to our conversation on that Friday, and he didn't think he could make that happen. Then we talked about his hours. He seems to be putting in a lot of hours and I was concerned. I do not want him getting burned out or having things fall behind. He told me he does not get out of ASP sometimes until 6:00 PM. I asked how we could fix that. Can the cleaning up be done before they go outside? Does everybody start cleaning up at 5:00 PM if you're inside? He said sometimes parents don't pick up until after 5:30. And I said, that has never been a problem in the past, and if parents are picking up late, that's another problem and we need to discuss it with the commission on how to fix that. Again, just trying to help him get done more quickly so he can get home to relax. This is not a new discussion, as it also came up prior to basketball. About a week after the director started, he told me that he offered to coach basketball because Abigail was looking for some more coaches. In the past, this has always been done by volunteers. We don't pay coaches. That is not part of our budget. I wasn't sure if he knew that we don't pay coaches and I wasn't certain, I was certain he hadn't been able to dissect the budget enough yet to know what was done or not done in the past. I said, that is great and it's a lot, but that would have to be on your own time. Please don't weigh yourself out and spread yourself too thin. It's not part of your job description. You're not obligated to coach as part of your job. He said, oh, I totally get that. I love doing it. I've coached my nephew's basketball team. Again, as he was new to the job, one weekend and no idea of what other programs he would need to initiate. I was more comfortable telling him to go to the first day, collect forms and money, but don't put himself in a situation where you are obligated to stay. I gave him some early friendly advice, but now he has changed his attitude on that subject as well. As you heard him say, he won't volunteer anytime to Park and Rec. Regarding the Emory Park Pool, I went to Jared's office and he had Kathy from the Torrington Area Health Department in his office discussing the Emory Park Pool and the letter she had written. Later, when I read the letter, I talked to Jared and said, I'd like to talk to Kathy myself. The reason I want to talk to Kathy is that neither Jared nor Kathy knew that the gates that were listed on her report The reason I want to talk to Kathy is that neither Jared nor Kathy knew that the gates that were listed on her report were repaired last year to code. Also, the pool always has weeds growing from the dirt on the bottom of the pool and the beach area at this time of year. She and Jared also don't know that we hire Billy McCann to go up and clean the pool every year before we refill it. I was also going to ask her if we could have one of the local businessmen that pours foundations and is skilled at concrete work provide the necessary report instead of paying an engineer. This person is highly respected in our town for his work and Kathy has frequently worked with him. I did not insinuate in any way, shape or form that I know how to fix the pool or that I know if the pool needs to be fixed or is structurally stable. I also have the number of the man who runs the Department of Public Works in New Melford for the state that covers Route three forty-one. And I was going to call him and see if we could set up an appointment for him to come and look at the road drainage. That should not be an expensive park and rec. The state DOT created the problem and should repair the problem. As you all know, we have had lots of money sitting in the capital plan waiting to be used. And I was looking forward to using it to fix up the pool to be, to be the beautiful place it has been and can be again. I encourage you all to check with people who have been doing this for years and years before discounting Emory Pool, Emory Park and its pool as a lost cause. If you have any questions, ask them now. Don't talk about me when I'm not here.
Thank you for your correspondence Lynn. Um, okay, we are gonna move on in the agenda to the budget and capital plan. Uh Jared, do you want to take it from here?
Of course you are.
Yeah, I will. I'll take it from here very quickly. Um, and then, you know, turn it over to you guys, but basically we had discussed at the last meeting, the special meeting, reallocating some of the capital funds elsewhere. And the two things that came up were, well, one, one was really the focus and the other was kind of my, um, my side note, but basically, um, the, I still go back to the fact and I'll, I'll, I'll beat this drum that, you know, forever. Um, we need a long-term plan, whether that plan is a brand new chlorinated pool or fixing up the Emory Park Pool or who knows what, um, we need to have some direction. And I think looking at where we are, looking at the lack of progress that's happened in certain areas, I believe a lot of that is because we lack that plan. And when you lack the plan, unfortunately, at times there's a lack of direction or you look at specific projects and say, oh, that would be really cool. Let's, let's look at this project or that would be really cool. Let's look at that project. And um, unfortunately, it's kind of like throwing darts. And what I really would like to see, whether it's done by a master planner, whether it's done in-house, that for me right now is kind of irrelevant, but putting something into coming up with that plan because that plan becomes our roadmap for all future decisions. And like I said, whatever those decisions may end up being, um, you know, in time, we will know that. But we need to start really planning out how we're going to create this map. That way we have a document. This document's been, you know, been contributed, but you know, to by all of us, by residents and approved whatever way it needs to be approved. And that way, moving forward, we can say, okay, what's next on the, the plan that we need to accomplish? Okay, um, we don't have a municipal basketball court, you know, it's time to, you know, put that into the capital fund. Oh, we need to whatever, whether it's a pool, whether it's a splash pad, whether it's Emory Park, have this all down in one real document that gives us a roadmap for the next five to 10 years. Um, and really helps us make the necessary changes. And um, you know, now's a good a time as ever. So that's really what I was hoping to see. And the um, what I, to comment, just to respond to the Zoom user, um, which I, I'm assuming is Lynn, is I have said repeatedly that I don't know if a master plan needs to be done by an outside company. However, I one hundred percent believe that we need a plan. I've said this a thousand times. I'm not going to continue to say it. Um, I, whether, how it's done is relevant to me. It needs to be done though. We need a plan. Um, but the other part of this is if we are going to reallocate, if we are going to reallocate some of these funds, I do believe we need to look at uh the fields at Kent, Kent Center School. Uh, because the building inspector did tell us that we need to replace the large backstop that it is beginning to show significant signs of wear and deterioration. As you guys know, that's like a twenty foot, five foot high backstop. It's going to be incredibly expensive. Um, you know, we're talking, you know, twenty to thirty thousand dollars because it also wasn't um built large enough to protect people on the playground. So when we do it right, it's going to cost money and I'd like to put money aside for that if we can, because it does need to be done and we have been notified of that. But that's all and I'll turn it over to you guys.
Jared, um, do you like, I don't think we, I think what the beauty of having a, a long-range plan or a master plan is to identify projects, capital projects, you know, and then prioritize them and then, you know, phase them out over time. That's kind of the, the primary reason why you do it.
Yeah.
Um, I know we've got a couple of things like, you know, so then we can shoot, we, we decide, you know, the degree to which, um, you know, it's a public process, how public the process is, um, when there are key decision points for the public to provide input on. So um, that's like the overarching idea of having any sort of long-range slash master plan. With that said, we know that uh there's some deferred maintenance that really needs to be addressed, in particular, the deferred maintenance of the, the playing fields. So I think that what, what we need to do here today is um, make a decision to request the reallocation of some of the capital funds that we have to deal with the deferred maintenance issue that is the fields. And, and, and keep it at the fields for now. And perhaps there's a larger capital plan for um structures, like I know we had a um, there was a bar, like a shed, there's what you're saying about the, the backstop and there's probably other structural things that need to be dealt with.
So I don't know if you guys saw the memo that I wrote, but it was in the documents and um, I'll, I'll just honestly just read you it quickly. It's not, it's not, it's not long. Um, just give me one second to open that up. All right, um, so-
And thank you for writing these. They're helpful to have.
Yeah, no problem, no problem. And it helps me too to focus my thoughts as well, you know? Um, that way I'm not here rambling on for twenty minutes uh with like I know I can do. Um, so basically the, uh, the letter was addressed to Abigail as the commission chair at the time, which was last night. Um, the town of Kent Park and Recreation Department is currently responsible for the maintenance upkeep improvement of the seven acres of playing fields located behind the Kent Center School. As you know, this property is owned by the Kent School, however, it has been leased by the town from the school and it hasn't continues to be used by both Kent Parks and Recreation as well as the Kent Center School. Although the assignment this facility to our department took place before I began working here in Kent, seems that previously there was much debate and currently debate continues, the debate continues as to which agency should be responsible for the fields. I will reiterate what I have said a number of times previously. I believe that the responsibility correctly falls to us as a parks and recreation department, and I see no issue with the fact that KCS may use these fields sometimes, even though we are responsible for doing the work to them. To defend that point, I go to the fact that we make use of indoor and outdoor school facilities on a daily basis at no expense to our department and without maintenance work being required from our staff. With that said, because the responsibility of this playing fields has fallen to us, because the fields have fallen into disrepair over the past decade, I would like to request a view in the commission that part of the currently allotted capital funds we are looking to reallocate be put aside for improvements to the KCS fields. Although I cannot provide specific and concrete numbers for improvement of the features and amenities there. After research, I believe that fifty thousand dollars should be set aside. My estimates contributing to this total request are as follows. Replacement of the ninety-foot baseball diamond backstop and fencing, uh, thirty thousand dollars. And I just noted that current, the current backstop, stop has been marked for replacement by the town building inspector. Furthermore, the backstop and related fencing is not the correct width or height for the safety of spectators and those using the adjacent KCS playground. And literally when we were on it the other day for ASP, uh, at least four foul balls went into the playground while we were on there. So just to give you an idea, that was just one day and it wasn't even an actual game. Um, I also believe that we should put aside um, a part of that fifty thousand. The replacement of the backstop on the two far fields, each backstop would be roughly five thousand dollars. So that's a ten thousand total. Believe we need to purchase a turf blanket system for grass regrowth. Um, I was out there with Miranda, who is a landscape architect and who I kind of defer to with some of these questions. And unfortunately, the soil out there is in really bad shape. Water, getting water out there is very difficult. And so at my previous job in these situations, we had what was called a turf blanket. Basically, it looks like a tarp, but it's semi-permeable and semi-translucent. It allows rainwater to get in and then traps it in there, creates a greenhouse effect so that the grass can grow uh much better. To give you an idea, we had an area where last fall we put down all topsoil and by this spring, the grass was almost fully grown in, which is pretty darn good. Um, so I'd like to purchase a turf blanket system so we could begin to address all of the places where there's literally no grass growing. That would be about four thousand dollars. Um, and then we need to demo or remove the old shed. Uh, it's, it's a liability at this point. It needs to be moved, removed. And we need to install a correctly sized shed that can house equipment like a, uh, you know, a, a motorized edger, edger for the infields. Um, bags of clay, bags of drying agent, et cetera. And I expect, especially with the rise in lumber costs, that this would cost around six thousand. And that was looking at various shed companies and looking for quotes. So the total was about fifty thousand dollars and um, I do believe all of that will be, will go to good use. The end.
Can I ask about the turf blanket? Is that something that is-
Turf, turf blanket, turf blanket, sorry.
Yeah, that's what I said, turf blanket.
It sounded like you said church blanket. I, I thought, I don't articulate it well.
Church blankets at all. Uh, turf, turf, turf blanket. Uh, that is something that's put down at the end of the season to regrow. That's not something that people have to drag out onto the field between use, right?
No, so basically, once the soccer season has concluded or any season in which we're no longer using a section of the park, um, you put that down and what you would do beforehand is you'd aerate, you'd put down any topsoil you need aerate. Uh, you'd fertilize, you'd overseed, and then you'd cover the entire area with the blanket. You'd stake it in, use weights to hold it down, put up signs to say, don't touch, don't step on. And then you just leave it until you were ready to basically play again. And uh, the results are really phenomenal. It, it, it increases or promotes grass, grass growth where basically at times it's not even possible um by creating optimal conditions underneath the blanket. It's basically like a greenhouse over the grass.
And did your, did your um, your calculations or your estimates for the shed, um, is that to build a shed? Have we looked at pre-made sheds?
Yeah, that is pre-made. Um, we would, so basically nowadays, um, and I, I, I work closely with a carpenter and, and it's funny because we wanted to build a shed over at our, one of our parks and he was like, just order one from Shedhouse or Best in Backyards or, or even Home Depot and they'll deliver it and they literally slide it off a flatbed right onto whatever pad you have, which basically we would just um excavate, put down some item fort and uh some railroad tie to frame it out and then put the shed right on top of it.
I was just gonna say that um, knowing that we do have these funds, um, and having um, been out on the baseball fields the other night, um, for the practice, the fields are really in disrepair, which we discussed in our other meeting. But it also is really moving to see the number of children that are out there and the number of families that bring like folding chairs and stuff, excited to see people playing baseball and T-ball and stuff out there. That um, all of this seems like it's a good investment in our um, in the future of our programming. Um, and uh, we'll really get good use out of it. Um, so I think that it does um seem right to be moving around some of the capital and be able to fix those fields.
Jared, I have a question and I, I agree. Julia couldn't be more excited and actually did a, a little bit of writing about the importance of having these sporting events just for parents to step back and observe their kids and take in the scene. Cause so often we don't even have time to really like be in the moment and be like, wow, look at this amazing thing that we're a part of. So psyched about all this programming, but anyways, I, yeah, we had that letter. We have the Kent Center School Playing Field Maintenance and Improvement uh, line item in the budget. And that was for thirty thousand and that seemed to focus predominantly on the field condition. And I have the, you know, the, the budget proposal from March seventh. And now this is reallocating thirty grand, uh, well, fifty grand. And this is, this is like more than the field. So there's the thirty grand for the fields. And now this is an additional fifty for um, the backstop and the fencing and more of these like physical um structural issues.
Yeah, so basically, oh, sorry, Abigail, continue.
No, no, I just wanted to like clarify that because I think um, at first I was thinking that the reallocation was for the fields. And I realized we have that budget. I don't know if we're making up for some of the money that we didn't necessarily get in the budget with this.
No, so basically, the, the increase in the budget line there. Um, and, and when I presented this to the board of selectmen, I made sure to, to, to explain this as, as best as I could. Basically, we were not doing, the reason those fields, in my opinion, continued to get worse, even though we were doing work to them, is because we were not doing enough work. So New England turf was coming out and they were doing what we asked them to do. But in my opinion, it was not in line with what standard practice should be for ball field maintenance. Um, especially fields that do get a decent amount of use. I know everyone says, oh, our programs have shrunk. Yeah, they have, but I see kids on those fields every single day, running around, trampling them. Just because it's not organized doesn't mean it's not used. And so, you know, standard practice is fertilization, overseeding, core aerating, uh, more fertilization and overseeding. Generally, you know, you try to do it twice a year. Um, it's, it is uh lime grub control. Those are all standard practices and we were only doing about half of them. And the problem is, is that when you only do half, it's basically wasted. In fact, in this case, you could see perfectly that it did absolutely nothing um, to keep the fields usable. They actually got worse, even though we were putting in eight thousand dollars a year. And as I said to the board of selectmen, it's if you cut corners, you're basically just wasting the money you're, you're using. You know, um, and that's why I believe we needed a much bigger budget. And part of the reason for that too is, and I always like to go back to this, we don't have our own park maintenance staff. So when we do this work, we're contracting with people. So we're paying them usually a pretty high hourly rate to come out and do work to seven acres worth of fields. Um, which is a lot of manpower. It's a lot of time. And none of these materials are cheap. They only get more expensive. I can't even tell you. Grass seed is so expensive, fertilizer is so expensive. Then we have lime, then we have the organic grub control. And so that part is just for what I believe needs to be yearly routine maintenance to those fields to keep them in satisfactory condition. Whereas what we're requesting in the capital is for major one-time improvements. Hope that kind of clears it up.
That makes sense. So the field is an ongoing maintenance. And it's, there's a lot to overcome right now because it's more or less not been maintained. Uh, and then there's a lot of deferred maintenance with the structures and the fences and the backstop and, and that stuff we've all been discussing. And that just needs to be taken care of. And so that's the capital. All right, that makes sense. Thanks for the clarification.
Of course.
I was thinking, there's, there's a neighbor right next to that school that's, that's maintaining an awful lot of acreage of fields. Is there any point in talking to Kent School about helping us out?
Well, I certainly have no problem with that. I believe and I'm, but John's not here tonight. Um, but he has mentioned to me in the past that that uh was broached several times and was a non-starter. Rufus, I don't know if you have any, you know, intel on the history of that arrangement, but um, I'm not opposed. Listen, just because it didn't work in the past doesn't mean it wouldn't work now. So you know, that's, that's foolish logic to follow, but.
And they've got the equipment, they got the equipment and the expertise right, right there.
Across the river.
I don't know how long we've had the arrangement with Kent School, but I mean, we lease all the playing fields and uh, some of the other land that they own over there. Um, you know, and, and they have always kept it. What I've been told is they've kept it so that when people drive up Route seven, they look- What I've been told is they've kept it so that when people drive up Route 7, they look across and they've preserved the view of the school. I know John wants to talk to them and see if they'd be willing to change their agreement with the town. I'm not sure that we would get anywhere with that, but um, John would like to at least see what the agreement and, and see a copy of, of the lease, if there's a written copy of the lease. But it is, it is true that they've got a, a lot of equipment there and, and perhaps they'd be willing to at least share some of the work if, if we approach them.
Or do it at a reduced cost or something we could.
Yeah.
Some sort of a. I mean, what, what the worst happens is they say no again.
Doesn't hurt to try.
Doesn't hurt to try. And, and also I was just thinking like, what, what, Jared, have you given any thought to, uh, ideally what, when you would want this work to get done on the fields?
So basically the, the backstop project on the large field is going to be our biggest issue. Um, because that one will require a contractor or some type of significant work that we can't do in-house. The other backstops are actually small enough that, um, we should be able to do them in-house. And as for the turf blankets and that type of work, um, that would be started immediately. Like if we reallocated this and the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Finance all said yes, those turf blankets would be ordered as soon as I could get quotes on them and you guys could approve them. Um, as for the shed, that would be the same thing. We literally, the shed is a liability. One of the doors was ripped off. Um, I mean, it's just, it needs to be taken down. Um, I already talked to Rick about like, if, you know, he'd be able to demo it or remove it. Um, so you know, uh, those things would be rather immediate.
And we talked about demoing the shed because we thought it was a, an issue and, and then putting a plan together for, because basically it was just, it's a dangerous thing to have out there.
Yeah, it really is. It really is. And there's just a whole bunch of stuff piled up inside it. I mean, it looks like a garbage dump, so. Um, and it may very well be, I don't know who left what in there over time, you know? So, um, yeah, it just needs to be removed.
So should we, okay, so there's, we need to go to the Kent School to see if they would contribute in any way. There's demoing the shed because it's an issue and a liability. You probably shouldn't be there because it's dangerous and kids play around there. Uh, then there's the reallocating of our existing 200,000 in capital that was earmarked for Emory to see if we can get some of that money to then fix, um, the structural issues and get the turf blanket.
Yeah, and the new shed.
And the new shed.
Yeah.
So do we go ahead and make a motion?
Did anyone else have any other questions that I could answer? I know obviously it's a significant amount of money, so I don't want to just, you know, I, I don't want to make, I want to make sure all stones are, uh, you know, overturned, whatever this phrase is.
Well, I don't think we're, I don't think the, whether or not Kent School would help us maintain the fields is really part of the decision at this point, right? I mean, we're really kind of looking at almost like a two, two-tiered response. We need to fix what is broken, um, and what is not working and what is unsafe. And then subsequent to that, you know, if Kent School turns around and says, yes, that's something different that would maybe hit a different, um, budget line item, but, um, at this point, um, you know, we've, we've assessed that there are some major issues that we would like to, um, that we'd like to address. What happens after, uh, what happens with this proposal once we make it, we are making it?
So.
Yeah, who needs to sign off? To whom do we present?
So this was brought to my attention, um, by several people, but basically, so we have on Friday is the, um, town meeting, right Rufus? Is that what we call it?
They hear. And then, then on the 20th will be the vote.
Got it. So it's my understanding that if we can get this accomplished this evening, I can then tomorrow, um, you know, speak with Barbara and take the necessary steps to make sure that it is addressed, um, at the Friday meeting.
So really this would be two separate motions then. One of them would be to approach the Kent School about ongoing maintenance to see if they'd be interested in partnering with us or helping out. And then, um, the more pressing motion would be to request re-allocation of the capital funds according to the needs that Jared outlined in the letter.
Sounds accurate. Yeah.
Um, do people want to discuss more or is anybody, um, ready to make a motion on this to have it go to the town meeting?
I would just mention that I have a, a friend that works maintenance at, uh, Kent School. So if you needed an introduction, Jared, uh, I'd be happy to do it, but, um, maybe there's another avenue that you know of.
Well, I certainly think that would be awesome. Um, and I was going to talk to Jean as well because I know she's been in talks with them about certain things. So, you know, hopefully maybe she can make some intros as well because I actually, believe it or not, I, um, at least not yet. Uh, outside of a few people from, you know, paying bills for this ice skating, uh, I don't really, I don't really know anybody there yet, so. Um, but I'd appreciate that, Michael.
Do we want to approach Kent School that way or do you want to go right to the head of school?
I mean.
I was thinking, I, so, um, uh, I thought, I, I was thinking that maybe we need to actually have like a sit down with the Kent School, um, perhaps the head of school, perhaps the athletic director. And perhaps whoever's in like the head of facilities. Cause I think there's a lot of things that we'd love to try to work out with the Kent School if we could. And so I, I was like, is, is it more strategic to kind of have a, a, a vision of perhaps a partnership with the Kent School in the future? And, um, where we, how we see it at work in other towns and what we'd love to try to broker or foster with them? Or is it like, you know, incremental? Right now, let's like focus on the field, see where we get, and then maybe we, we talk about lap swimming in their pool on Sunday mornings, or we talk about, you know, the use of the tennis courts in the winter. Like I, I just think there's a lot of great.
Yeah.
We have a lot of great partnerships and I just don't know the best way. If we're going to have a conversation, like, do we come with a lot of great ideas or?
Very great. Um, maybe we hold off on, I mean, I don't know that a conversation necessarily needs to be, um, in a motion, but maybe we, um, in the interest of moving things along tonight, we all kind of chew on that and at our next meeting, um, we discuss it and come up with a game plan of how to approach them.
I think that makes sense. Cause Abigail's right, there's more to it, you know, that if we really sit on, sit, sit back, chew on it and you know, especially as we continue to think about our long-range vision, how we can really start to forge those good partnerships will be, I, I think, uh, go hand in hand with, you know, our own internal, um, long-range vision, so.
Yeah, I never had a discussion with them about like, what would, what would make us a great partner for them? So it's a, you know, two-way street and we're not just asking. Great. So, uh, perhaps put a motion on the table to request to the BOS to reallocate, um, some of the 200,000 capital funds we had earmarked for Emory Park, um, to meet some needs with, uh, the KCS, the fields at KCS, and it's a $50,000 allocation. And that's for the baseball diamond backstop fence replacement. And the turf blanket for regrowth and the, uh, equipment shed.
Is that the only reallocation that?
No, I think we had other. Um, we also wanted to discuss, uh, planning and looking into Kent Common Park and the feasibility of locating a pool there. That was based on the meeting, the special meeting we had last week. Um, a study into the future of the parks to capitalize on their assets and maximize usage was the language I had from the last meeting.
And how much would we need for that? Jared, do you have an idea?
No idea. No, I honestly don't. Um, and I was told today that, um, fortunately, that the, the process by which capital funds can be reallocated can actually happen at any time with a special me, special town meeting called. Um, so we don't, I, I was a little concerned that this is our one and only shot and then we'd have to wait till next year. But we thankfully, there are other avenues. So, um, we don't have to jump into any decisions right away. And that includes even, um, the Kent Center School fields, if people don't feel comfortable with it. So we do have, we do have more of an opportunity. Sorry, I should have led with that, but I didn't even think of it until Rufus just mentioned it. Um, but I don't know where, where that would be financially. And I still think it deserves greater discussion personally with respect to how a long-range plan fits into all of that as well. Cause I don't, I don't feel we should get too attached with any one idea without really knowing what the future is going to be, what people want and what people will support, you know? Um, and, and that's, that's a key thing.
I agree. I feel like we should focus on the more immediate safety issues associated with the ball fields. And if we have the ability to wait, um, on that and have further discussion, we should, um, push that off.
Um, so we currently have a motion on the floor from Abigail, um, regarding the reallocation of the 50,000 for the, uh, ball fields at Kent Center School in the shed. Do we have a second on that?
Second.
Any discussion?
Well, I think, I mean, if you look at Lynn's comment in the chat and it's true, technically the ball fields have their own capital line item. They're not part of the, you know, here, here's the gray area that I don't think the town fully worked out when they said to park and wreck, you take care of the fields. So.
But don't we have the ball field maintenance in our own budget?
No.
It's not under ours? No, it's.
It's a separate line item.
It's a separate line item, but, uh, Barbara has told me that it is, although it is located elsewhere on the budget, that would, it is a part of our budget.
So is that, is there money in that as well?
Yeah. So that's what Abigail was referring to earlier regarding, um, the field, the regular field maintenance, which is to say, um, seed, fertilizer, lime, grub control, aeration, rolling.
Which is, is not enough.
Which is not enough. It's enough for maintenance, but we need to do these one-time plans to one-time, like a capital improvements to everything else, basically.
So there's, there's the line item, you know, 046-000 Kent School, Kent Center School Playing Field Maintenance and Improvement. And so that's for the field and that's the 30, that's 30,000. And that's a line item, 20, that's a line item in the budget. And then there's, what we're trying to get is capital improvements to the fields, which is about the fencing, about the backstops and about buying the, uh, or about the equipment shed and the, the turf blanket. And that's a capital improvement. So there, that's like a separate request. It doesn't fall under line item 046-000 Kent Center School Playing Field.
Rufus, the way I'd look at it as the, the, whatever numbers Abigail just said, that budget line, those are the recurring yearly expenses. They're not going to change. Every year, we're going to continue to have to do that work. Whereas the capital expenditures, expenses that I'm requesting are one-time purchases. So turf blanket, we purchased it, we don't need to purchase more. The shed, we purchased it theoretically in 30 years, for 30 years, we don't have to purchase it. The backstop, same thing, backstop should last you, you know, 30 to 40 years. So they're the one-time, you know, the true definition of a capital improvement. That's the way I, I look at them.
And so the, the, the line item, that's 20, 20K that was approved by?
Yeah. So that's on there for the, uh, for the vote. For the, yeah.
Okay.
And, uh, just so you guys know, um, I was at a Board of Finance meeting. I believe Rufus was there that day and they did question that line and, um, I defended it and, uh, it was left alone. So I think they understood where we were coming from with how we need to start correctly maintaining our fields. Or it's just going to be the Dust Bowl out there. We're going to have, it's going to just be a dirt field and, you know, we're not going to ever get grass to grow again. So, um, they, they seem to be in support of that.
I'm just gonna, uh, so the way that I think we're saying it is, you know, we've got the fix what's broken and this is the capital improvements and it's 50K. And this is what Jared outlined in that letter that we have, oh, I'm sorry, um, you know, line item. This line item, zero, you know, 46. And this is a record, recorded, recurring yearly expense and that's 20K. And then, you know, perhaps down the line, Kent School can help us. But what we're right now talking about is this 50K in capital improvements. That's for the, the backstop and the fence and the regrowth. So they're two separate things. And we're trying to, we're trying to make a motion on, on this one. And we have, we've made this proposal and BOS has to decide whether that budget will be approved.
That's very accurate.
Does this help everybody? No, helped me.
Very much so.
Yeah, looks good.
Okay.
Um, are we ready to, uh, vote in, vote on this?
I will say one thing to Julia, sorry, not to prolong the discussion further, but if tomorrow I go in and then the Board of Finance is like, no, wait a second, this is all wrong. Well, it's not like it's the end of the world, you know? We'll go back to the drawing board, figure out if there's another avenue in which to approach this. But, um, you know, I think we make the motion and that gives me the, the leeway to go speak with Barbara, sit down. You know, show word, you know, what it is that we just worked on and, um, roll with it.
And go to the town meeting. Yeah.
Yeah.
I think the thing to focus on is that we're taking our responsibility as stewards of those fields seriously. And, um, that yes, we're committed to the ongoing maintenance of what we'd like to turn into a safer and, uh, more inviting space uh, for use, not just the school, but the town.
Agreed.
You're here.
Okay. So we have the motion and the second, um, do all in favor, want to say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Um, does anybody oppose? Okay, the motion carries. All right. Jared and Abigail also for laying it out clearly for us. All right, um, moving on, um, Jared, is that it for budget and capital plan? Should we move down to?
Yeah, I think so. I just think that, you know, we have to continue to really be cognizant of this long-term plan and you know, uh, Abigail has used the term before, you know, kick the can down the road and we don't, we don't want to do that with this one. So let's make sure we all keep it fresh in our minds and continue to find ways to discuss it and hopefully hash it out in the near future. So we can, you know, Steve Penner said it the other day, you know, you, like, it's time. You know, Steve Penner said it the other day, you know, you, like, it's time for action, so let's get a plan in place so we can, you know, become. A commission of action. So.
Okay, on to programming, Camp Kent. Do you want to give an update, Jared?
Yeah, so obviously this discussion has been kind of hanging in limbo for the month. Because of everything else and my inability to get to a meeting on the agenda correctly, but, uh, or agenda incorrectly. But so I met with David from Camp Getaway, who was Club Getaway. Who was really cool and we were just walking, he was showing me the facility. And he's like, what's going on with camp? You know, we'd love to have you guys come for a day. And I'm like, I don't know what's going on, you know, Emery Park isn't looking like it's going to work. So he just turned and looked at me, he was like, well, why don't you just run camp here? And which was, I mean, I was kind of blindsided by it, but was super appreciative. And I'll, I'll say it, and I'm not ashamed to say it. I think that the camp that we could offer there, even if Emery Park had the pool. Club Getaway still has just way more and amazing amenities. And so being able to run a camp there is, is really phenomenal. And so obviously he and I discussed it briefly, but then I had to go back, I had to talk to the health department. And I had to talk to the state, the office of whatever, early childcare or something or other. Because it's one thing to run a camp on your own property, but once you go to third party, it kind of changes things. But fortunately, after much discussion. It was determined that we're good to go. We are still exempt from a lot of what private camps have to do. Not that I won't. Obviously set a camp up that's safe, et cetera, but we are basically good to get started. So previously you guys had given me. The authority to advertise for a camp director, so that advertisement has already gone out today. And with an application deadline of next Tuesday, so it'll be running for a week. And basically what we need to do now are focus on the nuts and bolts of it. Which I'm getting very close to determining how much the camp will cost us to run. Examining our budget and determining what we can make work. And then from there, I can adequately. Determine how much we need to charge for it. So I'm probably going to call, have to call a special meeting for that in the near future, but it would literally be. I'd have the whole plan in place on paper. You guys could read it ahead of time. We'd come in, vote on it, and then bing bang boom. But David was very nice. He told us he'd only charge us a hundred dollars a week for use of the facility, not a per person, just a hundred dollars total. We wouldn't need lifeguards because they already have them. They would also give us one counselor from Club Getaway to be our kind of. Liaison, so that way anytime we're doing an activity or whatnot, they'd be able to help us do it correctly, whether it's. You know, using low ropes course, high ropes course, whatever else, we'd have a club getaway trained member with us. And then we'd need our own camp director and obviously our own counselors, basically the way we would any other camp we're running. So, yeah, right now it's really putting the nuts and bolts together and giving you guys a really good, clear presentation. And just what I'm thinking is four days a week at Club Getaway, one day a week, a trip somewhere. And I've already contacted All Star, the bus company, which is what the schools use to get pricing on that. So I'm going to work that into my proposal. And, uh, I mean, I don't know, I feel really good about it. I can't articulate the ins and outs just yet, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
But does Club Getaway use, use the facility on Fridays? Is that? Or is that the beginning of their weekends and?
He said, we need to be out by four o'clock on Fridays. That's when the adult time starts. But everything else is, he said he has day camps from all over there throughout the week.
Can you, can you tell me where the posting is going out for the camp director? I have a couple of people. Who might be great.
Okay, um. Joyce said the paper. I don't actually know what that means because I'm not from around here, but it's also on our website too. So they can go right on there, the application's on there.
Great, thanks.
No problem.
Probably the Lakefield Journal and the Waterbury Republican, I would think.
The Waterbury Republican seems to be, uh. Seems to, seems to be the paper. That I've learned.
I, I'm a local of Waterbury and I'm, I, I cannot believe how much press gets. And didn't realize that when I moved here, how much my family would be reading about parks attack.
Well, that's really exciting about Camp Kent. And I'm excited to see how it all shapes up. The, just I think the number one thing that we'll want to be cognizant of the whole time is that. Our counselors aren't doing anything that they're not trained to do, like that they are working with liaisons. If there is a scenario when they're doing a low ropes course and stuff like that, that. We're very much guided by what we should be doing and what are.
Yeah. So Julie, I think that is a really important point and part of what I really want. Whoever our camp director is to be able to do is to start more or less immediately, at least part time networking. With Camp Getaway and really going over the soup to nuts. So that we can make, or Club Getaway, I'm sorry, I keep saying it incorrectly, but so that we can make sure, like you said, all those. Those things are addressed and our i's are dotted, t's are crossed. And what we need to be able to do and what I said to David was that if we're there, we're going to more or less be. Invisible, right? And, and what that means to say is he's running a for profit business and we are going to be. Operating our camp there at a very reasonable cost and we're going to be doing it in such a way where. He doesn't have to worry about us, right? Where we're going to come in, we're going to do our thing. We have our counselors and counselors. He's giving us that one person who's going to help us. With what it needs to be done, but ideally that camp director will have everything soup to nuts worked out. In advance of the start of the camp, that way we come in, we have a whole schedule. Every day, what times we're on, what ropes course or, or, you know, zip line, or we're playing in the pool, the, the lake, or we're. Whatever it may be, it is all one hundred percent in a neat little tidy box.
Okay, great. All right, coding classes?
All right, so.
Can I just ask one follow up question about, what's the timeline for us to be able to see the proposal? I just want to make sure we're. Get this out, message to the community early enough that they know they have the option.
Yeah, well, I don't, we may have missed that boat just a little bit, but I would, I would honestly like to. I would honestly like to have a, a special meeting called, if not for the end of this week, the very beginning of next week.
Thanks.
No problem.
All right, coding classes, do you want to just move through the rest of the programming, Jared?
Yeah, sure. So coding classes, um, there is a. And I really do apologize because in the haste of trying to get back here on time, I left a folder of mine. At the office which had, let me see. I believe had the info that I needed for the coding class. So annoyed, sorry about that. So basically, there is a company. I'm going to go through my email and get the name of them since I don't have the paperwork, but, um, they. Do virtual coding classes and they partner with rec departments in Connecticut and Massachusetts throughout New England. To run small online via a Zoom like platform. Coding classes where they teach the kids all about coding. I don't know enough about that stuff, but it's like the in thing. And they get to learn how to, you know, create different modules and things of that nature. And this would be a ten percent fee program where basically we partner with them. They'd sign up through them and then they would cut us a check for the ten percent of. Of the, the program cost and it costs, it's a two hundred and fifty dollar fee. And I'm sorry, I feel unprepared, but I really just. I left that, that folder, give me one second here. So they would pay two hundred and fifty dollars for the program. And they would get to, oh, CodeWiz is the name of the program. And they would get to pick like what kind of. What kind of coding they were getting to learn. So it's not just like this one blanket. You know, class, there's different options on different things you can learn how to code. And it would be done similar to how we're doing Slamajama or the mountain bike camp where we would link. To their website, they would sign up through them and at the end we'd be cut a check for whatever Kent. Park and Recreation signups they got. Sorry, I didn't articulate that well, but it's pretty straightforward. So just CodeWiz and it's, uh, they pay two hundred and fifty bucks, so we would get twenty five dollars per person.
What age do they take? Any, are there any restrictions to that?
So it. Let's see, hold on one second, let me see here. So they have programs for children, no, no, or no lower than seven years old. Because it's just, I think it's a little too much, but it goes seven years old and up, and there's all these different. Things, so you can make your own Roblox, Roblox games, you could code with Minecraft. You can, for older kids, learn how to use JavaScript and create animations. You can learn Python, I don't know what that is, and Unity, I don't know what that is either, but those are for like thirteen and up. So it's, it's basically seven years old through adult.
Yeah, Python is like, that's great to have kids being exposed to that at this age.
Sorry, and did I miss, where would it be held? It's in person?
No, it's virtual.
Virtual, okay, got it.
So I found the flyer here, here we go. So it's for seven to, seven to seventeen years old. There's different options on which days and times you could choose, and they keep it a very small coach to student ratio. Of either one to three or one to four kids. They use a safe online platform and they run from the end of June to the end of August. And CodeWiz aligns its curriculum with the K through twelve computer science framework. And represents a vision in which all students engage in the concepts and practices of computer science. Maintain a low coach to student ratio of one to three or one to four. Minecraft, Roblox and Unity. Require a PC, all other sessions require PC, Mac or Chromebook. Or I'm sorry, require a PC, Minecraft, Roblox, Unity, you need a PC or a Mac. The other sessions, you can use PC, Mac or a Chrome. And, uh, yeah.
Do you mind sharing the flyer with us so we could? Chew on it?
Like share my screen?
No, do you mind putting it in the documents for this meeting? Is it, is it a time sensitive decision?
I mean, it's a ten percent program, so I, I feel like. I, I honestly would request that there, we don't wait on it. I mean, we can get the information out, we might as well. I just put it in there. I mean, does anyone have any real concerns about it or?
I'm just trying to think of time and that, it's almost eight thirty. If there's time sensitive things. Sorry.
I know, it's okay. I just want to make a motion to accept it. I mean, you know, it's, it's all done by them. We're just taking twenty five dollars.
I'll, I'd make a motion to. Move forward with the coding whiz proposal and market it to our community and see who wants to sign up for it.
Second that.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, motion carries.
Sorry, Abigail, if you have any other questions, just email me. I'll forward any details.
No, sorry, I've just. I'm getting distracted.
Yeah, in the interest of time. Why don't we maybe just figure out what we should go through in the agenda tonight, like any time sensitive stuff that we need to get to that's left? And then we can move the other items to our, the agenda for our meeting two weeks from now.
All right, all I care about is learn to skate. And then the last three in the parks and field, which are very.
Okay.
So, oops, sorry.
No, okay, so let's move on to, so summer ultimate frisbee, we're going to hold off.
Yeah, we, that's fine. That's nothing pressing.
Great, learn to skate. Why don't you go ahead on that?
All right, so I wrote you guys a memo in there as well, and I'll just read that very briefly. After reviewing the cost of the aforementioned program, that is to say, learn to skate against our revenue, I would once again like to request that a stipend be issued to Lee and Jim Soul for their administration. The twenty one, twenty two edition of the program, Lee and Jim were responsible for all, all aspects of running this program, which included taking registrations, collecting program fees. Coordinating with the Kent School staff on days of our facility use, management and supervision of over forty participants. Spanning a variety of ages and all program planning, communication and instruction. It's my goal to move the town of Kent Parks and Recreation Department to a place where people who take on responsibilities akin to a program coordinator are paid as such. And I believe it would be in our best interest and incredible show of gratitude and good faith to do so for Lee and Jim. Furthermore, in advance of this meeting, I checked with our town treasurer Barbara Herbst. And she has confirmed that a stipend would be allowable in this case. With that said, below, please find our revenue and expenses for this program. The program revenue was five thousand forty five dollars. The program expenses were twenty four hundred. Therefore, revenue exceeded expenses by two thousand six hundred forty five dollars. Those numbers being taken into consideration. Along with the fact that combined, Lee and Jim spent no less than thirty six hours administrating and running this program. Hereby requested a stipend of five hundred forty dollars be issued to Lee and Jim Soul, which is the equivalent of the pair being paid fifteen dollars per man hour. Respectfully, Jared, blah, blah, blah. I just, I just can't say enough that I think we need to do it. I mean, they administered a program. They didn't just volunteer to coach. This is above and beyond. Work and we need to start setting a precedence that, in my opinion, people who take. On those types of responsibilities should be paid a stipend for it. And we need to start creating our, our paradigm in that fashion.
I just, out of curiosity for people who have been on the commission longer or in town longer. Is this anything that we have done before? Like, is it? Would this catch Lee and Jim by surprise? No.
It would not catch them by surprise, given the conversations that they've engaged me in, if you touch my drift.
Yep.
I don't recall us ever approving something like this in the past, but.
I guess a hundred percent appropriate in being a part of the program. A few times now, I can vouch for all the coordination and all the chaos that happens on the ice before. During and after, and I think that they are, just have been so committed to. Making sure the kids learn how to skate and they, I think they have a saying that's something like. Ski, swim and skate are like the essential things that kids, kids up here need to learn and they're making sure that the kids learn how to skate.
So Jared, are you suggesting that? We do like a fifteen dollar an hour for a general, I mean, as a. Stipend to people, is that?
I can't say I would want to really kind of do a little more homework, but I, I'll tell you, all the rec departments I know of that I coordinated with. When Rufus, you know this from men's softball, et cetera, like my, our men's softball coordinator in Kent, New York, or Patterson, or Pauling, or. Mayapac, they all got a stipend for being the administrator of that program. Once again, when you have a small department, you need people like that that you can count on. And I would say in the case of a learned escape or, or. Or whatever else that. That we start establishing a protocol. Now, I can't say for sure it would be fifteen an hour or whatever, you know, men's softball in New York, it was a hundred dollars a team, basically. It was just this broad thing. So therefore, if fourteen signed up, you got four hundred. If twenty teams signed up, you got two thousand because you grew the league. So we'd have to really discuss a good policy. But I think where, when we're going to count on someone to do more than just your basic volunteering to coach a team. We need to establish that, like, hey, we're looking for a coordinator for this program. And then they would, you know, basically based on the policy that we've created, they would be compensated accordingly.
I mean, that's, you know, from my own involvement with New Melford, I've gotten paid for. All, all different types of things where I've coordinated, like the soccer program or the. Men's softball, stuff like that. And a lot of times it's just been, you know, a discussion with the director. At some point, you know, I mean, usually. point, you know, I mean, usually, usually ahead of the program, but um, you know, I agree that in, when you organize something, um, and, and you're still, you're, you're in charge of making sure that the volunteer coaches are, you know, following through and doing what they're supposed to do.
Yeah, I, you're right, and you, you're in charge, and what's key in that is, is being in charge comes, brings extra responsibility, but then also, I, as director, or you guys as the commission, we can then expect a little more from that. You know, we had our men's softball coordinator, and we were having some issues with guys um, smoking marijuana at the fields. And I said to him, like, listen, I need you out at the fields this Sunday, you have to be there the whole day talking to these guys. And he, you know, he did it, because it was his job to do it. And I think that is the benefit. Um, but also, we're trying to grow this department, and this is an easy way to grow it without having to take on full-time staff and pay benefits and all that other nonsense. Um, and like I said, make people feel like, oh, whoa, I'm getting a little bit for this, wow, I'm appreciated. You know, listen, is $540 gonna change Lee and Jim's life? Probably not, but I bet you sure as hell, sure as heck is gonna go a long way to make them feel good about the work that they did.
Um, it, it will impact to some extent, program costs as you figure them down the road, I would think. But other than that, um, I think it's a good idea.
I agree. I think if we're gonna do this, then um, we should just know as we move forward with programming, um, and setting fees for it, that we should decide ahead of time whether or not we're gonna have a stipend, or maybe we have a policy that there will be a stipend when it's a scenario that um, where somebody from the town is actually taking ownership of the whole program, um, and we figure that into the fees then.
Agreed, 100%.
So that, that, um, you know, that I think will, there's so two prongs here, one, the, you know, a motion to offer Jim and Lee the stipend, and then two would be to create some sort of a formal, more formal than we've got, because we don't have anything, huh, policy uh, regarding.
I think the only thing that we made formal back in the day was that at least coaches would be given a gift. And we did, we did formalize that, beyond that. So I think we're taking it to the next level, which is great. So I'd like to make a motion um, to give Jim and Lee Soule a stipend for their coordinating and running the Learn to Skate program of $540.
Sorry.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Okay, the motion carries. Um, and then I guess, uh, going forward, I'll put a motion out there that um, as we move forward in introducing programming ahead of time, we'll determine whether or not a stipend is appropriate for those administering the program. Um, and if so, uh, we will figure that into program fees.
Second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Post? All right, the motion carries. Okay, so um, do we need to talk about summer concert series tonight, or can we move back?
We can, we can wait.
All right, uh, the engine, purchase of engineering wood fiber?
Nope, we can wait.
Tree wardens report?
Yeah, um, basically, he came through, marked a bunch of trees. Um, the only thing of consequence is that we need to close off the entrance or the, the path that goes back on Emery Park to the um, the pool that's back there, because there are a lot of dead trees and a lot of dead uh limbs. So he has requested that we block that off until we can have those trees removed. Um, Ed Mattson can remove some, so just gonna, we're trying to work with him to see how much he can remove, because I told him, you know, please do not take on anything with respect to trees that you do not feel 100% comfortable with. Um, so, um, but I am going to get some of that, like uh, it's like a orange constructiony plasticky fence and close off that whole area, just so you guys know, and when you see it there.
Okay.
Was all, yeah.
Um, okay, uh, can we move Emery Park Pool to the next meeting?
Yep, no problem.
Okay, and the building inspector's report?
Um, basically just saying, uh, he did not give us a formal report, but John and I walked all three parks with him. Um, he expressed several concerns about the pool, um, basically mimicking what I can, had concerns about, what Kathy had concerns about, what Kerma had concerns about. Um, he said that the pavilion is in good shape, um, so he's not concerned about that. I know John had several times mentioned some concerns, but he said it looks very structurally sound. And then when we went over to the Kent Center School, he did say that the backstop um, is gonna need to be removed in the very near future. And I mean, we literally walked up to it and with our hands, we're able to shake it. So when you have a structure that's 20 to 25 feet high and you can shake it with your hands, not a good, not good. So um, he said it's not like it's gonna fall right away, but we need to replace it sooner rather than later, uh, you know, hence the earlier discussion in the meeting.
Yeah, I have pulled my children off of that backstop. I do scale it, so I'm in favor of that. Okay, um.
Wanted to thank John for the time that he's been giving to walk the parks with you.
Yeah.
John's not here.
What was that? Sorry. Oh, yeah, John's, yeah, he's been at the parks. Every time I go out, he's out there with me. So thank you, John.
That's wonderful. All right, well, in the interest of getting everybody to bed, unless uh, we have something else to discuss, uh, I will adjourn this meeting at 8:30 PM. Thanks, everybody, so much for your time tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks, Julia, for taking this on. Yeah, thank you, Julia.
You're welcome.
Bye.